I think.
Going forward, it would be better to keep them as one for the way they're stored in various and sundry places. But that's okay.
I was on such, I was on such.
No, I actually think it's going to just show up as a blip.
Either way, we're now recording again.
Okay, so we're back again.
Do we want to open that door? I'll do it. You stay where you are.
So we're opening the door just to make sure that we have public in the room if they are here. Anyone?
Look at the rush.
Look at that.
Thank you.
Okay, so it is technically now seven oh two. This is our regular meeting and I will call us to order. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing and seeing none. Look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Thank you very much. Moving on to the city clerk and treasurer's report.
Three things. One, we do have two properties that are scheduled for tax sale this coming Thursday. And we're expecting both of them to actually go through to tax sale. We had four to start with, two of them have been redeemed already. The reminder that the water and sewer bills were mailed the first of December and are due by the end of December. And lastly, actually, they're due by January third because of the way the calendar falls. So everybody's got a few more days. And lastly, we have posted information on the election page of the city website about town meeting. Officers are up for election petition forms, nominating the list of officers. Various and sundry things, so go to the website or stop by the office. We can print things off for people too. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for the clerk or treasurer?
Yeah, I just. Do you guys in the city clerk's office, do you do any of the DMV stuff?
We do renewals, registration renewals. If you have the form from DMV, the DMV mails you, you can come into the office. You can give us a check or money order payable to DMV. We're just a pass through.
Yeah.
Payable to DMV for the renewal. We will issue you a temporary renewal and a temporary sticker. And then we'll mail it into DMV for you and they will mail you the final renewal. There is a three dollar administrative charge that comes to us that is separate from the check or money order that you make out to DMV and that can be cash, so.
I got that form from DMV and I was, and it said, your clerk may be able to do this.
Yeah.
I will ask Carol.
Yeah, there is actually a list on the DMV website of the towns that do offer that service.
Counselor Hemrick.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Carol. I was just curious which properties were redeemed off the tax sale and which ones remain?
The ones that remain are 12 Pleasant Street and 122 Batch Elder Street, unit number three. We had a Lawrence Avenue property that has been redeemed and I can't remember the fourth one.
Wasn't there a Hill Street and Bassett Street properties?
Were sold in April. Okay. Bassett's, yeah, so, yeah. On this current group, the, I don't, I, I'm sure there wasn't a Hill Street. I don't know whether there was a Bassett Street or not.
But those two properties are the ones that are left, the 12 Pleasant and the 122 Batch Elder.
Correct.
Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none, anything for liquor control?
Nope.
And we are without a city manager today. He did submit his report. If you do have questions, feel free to message him and we'll try to get that. Any questions that you might have in his next manager's report? For visitors and communications, anything that is not on the agenda? And Sonia, I believe you're here for one of those items.
I am. Would you like me to go first?
Please do.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm here tonight because I'm wearing my school board hat, school board chair hat. We have one of our Berry City School Board members resigned on Thursday and we have an open seat at this point. And I emailed Carol and she sent the statute and statute and basically the process, because Berry City does not have its own board, we have to go to city council to ask the, what the pleasures of the council to, how to proceed to fill this seat. So we are happy to manage the process and come back to you with a recommendation. If you would like us to do that and we need to fill the seat within 30 days, so.
So Carol had printed out the statute, which is VSA 16, Chapter 11, Section 706.
That's an L.
L. So it's the L's and ones look alike. So within that, there's Section B two, and it speaks to that appointment, which basically, since it's within the 30 days, the conversation and the suggestion, I think, that the clerk was making is that on our December 21st meeting, we have you come back with a recommendation at that meeting for the appointment.
Yes, so just so you understand the process, if you are, if the city council is okay with the board managing the process, we will post that we have an open seat and ask for interested applicants who have to be Berry City registered voters to submit their letters of interest to Carol by next Wednesday. We will interview any interested applicants next Thursday at our board meeting on the 16th and then bring a recommendation to you this, back to city council on the 24th.
Yep.
Okay.
So counsel, is everybody okay with that process?
Just one clarifying question, is that appointment then just through town meeting day and the seat would go back up in March?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So there, there will be two years remaining on that term. So what will go on the ballot in March is the last two years of that, yeah.
Okay. So it sounds like that's what the process will be. And so I think you've already been in contact directly with Carol. So if there's anything else, please feel free to reach out, but it sounds like you both have it under control.
Okay, great. All right, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
See you on the 21st, if not before.
Okay, thank you.
So Sonia, while I do have you though, are you needing anything for the holidays to have food?
So unfortunately, our kitchen at Heading Methodist Church is completely ripped out. We're replacing it. And so there will be no community Christmas dinner this year, unfortunately. I'm not sure if there are other plans in place. I would have to check with our outreach minister to see if there are. We have a food shelf, so I'm sure that there's probably, you know, food that can be, people can take home to prepare, but there's no meal happening on Christmas Day at our church that I, that I normally organize.
Okay. If there are other organizations that we can work with.
Yeah, I'm not sure. The Christmas dinner, Christmas Day is usually a little, they're a little more sparse, but if I hear of anything, I will let you know.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
So is there anyone else for visitors and communications for an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing and hearing none. Moving on to eight A under old business, this is the charter work group update. Counselors Reel and Stockwell. Counselor Stockwell, I think you had the item that was in the packet and Counselor Reel, you might have some items that weren't in the packet, but we can discuss as part of it. So I'll turn it over to you.
There's, in the packet, there is a section which I haven't found yet that lists a, a part of the, that list of a board of health that we do not in fact use. Thank you, Teddy. So since it hasn't been used during the pandemic and it hasn't been used 10 years before that, we don't anticipate using it in the future unless there's a big objection to just get rid of this particular section. So it says that the board of health shall consist of the health officer and three legal voters of the city. The health officer shall be the secretary and executive officer of the board and shall hold office for three years and until a successor is appointed. The board of health created as herein provided shall be for the city in lieu of the local board of health provided for by Vermont statutes and shall have all the powers invested in local boards for health, for the preservation of health and abatement of nuisances and removal of other causes injuriously affecting health and shall have powers to adopt such rules and regulations as they deem wise for the regulation of the board, of the work of the board and concerning health in the city. Said board shall be subject at all times to the direction of the city manager. All rules and regulations of said board, when the same are approved by the city manager and duly published as herein prescribed for ordinances, shall have the force and effect of ordinances for the city. Any person who shall refuse to obey a lawful order of such board shall be punished not more than $500. Such, said board shall make duplicate a record of all of its doings and reports and a copy of such shall be placed on file with a city clerk. So my suggestion is that we move that section, but other people who have other experience, longer experience may want to speak to that.
Well, and I'll turn to Carol as a member.
I've been a member in name only for a ridiculously long period of time. Not sure how I got on it, but the one thing I did want to say is that there, the charter language references statute and there is statutory language about forming a board of health. The, the primary difference between what's in our charter and what's in statute is that the charter says the board shall be made up of residents, of voters of the city of Berry and the statutory language says it's members of council or members of the governing body. That's the primary difference between the two. So, so if it were removed from statute, the city would still have the ability to create a board of health if it wanted to. It's not that that ability would go away, so.
Yeah, it'd be similar to our annual control board, because that's a group of councils that come together. Do you have more to?
I just, I just want to add that the other difference is that for state statutes, the, the board answers to the, to the department of health, not to the city manager. So that's another difference. And, but in looking at it, the only city that I saw with an active local board of health was Burlington, which has, which has problems we do not have.
Well, and they would have more resources too.
Yes.
Counselor Hemrick?
Yeah, I actually served as an interim health officer for a municipality in Vermont and I'm pretty, pretty familiar with boards of health and, and I'm aware of quite a few active boards of health in towns, small and large. And my understanding of, of the statute is not that a board of health is an optional thing. It would just revert back to the governing body. It would also mean the chair of the governing body becomes the acting health officer in the event of the absence of a health officer. And that, that could be, you know, rental housing, safety inspections. The scope of a board of health in the town health officer is very broad from insects, rodents and pests, all the hazardous waste, asbestos, rental housing, indoor air quality, outdoor air quality. And, and although our, our health board has not met, it seems like that might be a reflection of the fact that there haven't been any health order or enforcements of the health laws that would, to the point that a health order would be issued. And, and just as an example, the problem that could potentially be solved by a board of health is just outdoor garbage. And I know Counselor Reel has a vacant property, home next to her property. It has a pile of garbage, it's been there two years. Certainly not the type of thing that you would expect to sit that long and go unaddressed by, by, by a city government. And although there, you know, there's different difficult title issues, I think this is one of those things where a health order and a hearing before the board of health and some action might spur, might spur a property owner to address, address a problem in a, in a faster way. And that's the type of thing that, you know, affects how whether or not people want to invest in the community. If they see a pile of garbage sitting in the neighborhood for a long time that goes unaddressed, that, that's something we can and should be acting on. And I kind of think that there's still a role for a local board of health and that, and to have one with a specific mission and focus to address these issues, but also pandemic safety measures to meet, discuss, maybe are there non-regulatory ways that we could encourage or support in terms of public messaging? Or safe shopping hours or rewarding businesses that have safe shopping hours? So I would, I would, I would encourage the council to retain this language in the charter, recognizing that it's useful language and the work would just revert back to council if, if, if enforcement did start to occur that merited health orders by our town, our city health officer.
So just to know, we do have separate trash ordinances. So for those instances where I know that I even worked with Bill and Bill sitting in the room on Prospect Street where there was a trash that was left at a building and they were able to cite that location. And the difficulties I think that has been in the past is, I think you mentioned it, Counselor Hemrick, is the, the title issues of who are you actually citing? Sometimes it's difficult to find out who the property owner actually is on some of those locations. But either way, so we do have a way to deal with the trash. The other part of it is about the health orders. And I think what you're referring to, like with the pandemic, that still would take some, some knowledge on those items. So having a board that directly reports to the city manager versus if we went back and reverted back to the state statutory language, which reverts us as reporting to the department of health, we may be able to get more resources by having that entity be able to give us information. The case in point is we still can't get city level information on our current pandemic. That we can get cases, but we can't get anything on deaths. We can't get demographic information by our location. And that might be something that the board would at least be able to see in order to make some better decisions on. Counselor?
Just to, just in response to that, you know, I think if we had a board of health and they asked the commissioner, somebody, the commissioner of health to show up, I'd be, I'd be surprised if they wouldn't provide some level of service. And if we have a trash ordinance and, and it's working, that's great. But what I'm worried about is when it's not working, what other, and, and using the leverage we have within, within state statute in our own ordinances to get these problems solved.
Counselor Booton?
So removing it will restrict our powers or what we can do with that board, correct? And even though we're not currently using it, if I, if I understand that correctly, like we have more freedom to select individuals with the current charter language. Am I correct on that?
With the current charter language, we can select residents in addition to members of council.
So I think that although it's in state statute, the additional ability to, to go beyond what state statute has, I think that's something that, you know, although we're not currently utilizing it, I don't know if we need to give up that freedom that we have as a, as a, you know, a municipality. And I would actually be in support of keeping the language.
Counselor Wazza, and then Counselor Reel.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think Counselor Hemrick made some good points on some of the hyper local issues that a board of health could be used for. I think I came into this leaning, take it out of the charter. But if there is, you know, if, if that's not what the council as a majority wants, I'm fine with that too. I, I would just think though, this does seem a bit dated to me in the context of the pandemic. I frankly, I think the last thing we need is another health organization giving recommendations on what to do during the pandemic. I think we've seen a lot of problems nationwide with too many messages coming from too many different places and that's gotten confusing for people. So, you know, I don't think that this is something, a city government of this size should be exercising when it comes to that pandemic, but I do understand there may be some good local reasons to retain it. So I don't feel strongly, frankly, one way or the other.
Counselor Reel?
So I personally am not in favor of getting rid of this just because when it comes to an issue such as last week when we were talking about mask mandates, you know, it'd be nice to have a board of health to refer back to and say, what do y'all think, you know? But also when it comes to, as Counselor Hemrick was talking about the trash in my neighbor's backyard, that's been there for two years, you know, people don't want to talk to anybody about or make a complaint because what they get back is, we can't do anything. I've stopped complaining about it because what I get back is, well, we can't do anything about it. And I have, you know, wild animals in this pile of garbage that I look at every day. But nothing can be done about it. So how does that make the community feel when they hear, we can't do anything about garbage that you have to look at every day? And that's what, what the community hears in the city of Berry is, we can't do anything about it. It's somebody else's issue. And that's what a lot of us are feeling, it's somebody else's issue.
So Counselor Booton, is your hand up again?
It is. So just to follow up on the, the conversation about the trash in the yard. Have you looked at the trash ordinance? Does it qualify, I mean, are we talking about, because, because if it's like legitimate trash, I believe that's addressed in the, in the ordinance. And, and if it's a situation where it is addressed in there and it's not being adhered to, that's a, something I would definitely take up with, with the city manager.
So, so Counselor Booton, I've been talking about this garbage for two years. It's scrap metal, it's rubber, it's garbage. I haven't gone down and looked at it, you know, and I'm sorry to be a little catty, but I'm sick of talking about the garbage in my neighbor's backyard.
So for this instance, we, we can take this and I can follow up with you and the manager and we can bring in our health officer to make sure that.
I've talked to Howie about several times.
Okay. I, I would like to be a little more versed on it myself though, to make sure if there is a standing complaint that hasn't been addressed, that we make sure that it's addressed. So, but back to.
To the extent that it can be.
To the extent that it can be, correct. Thank you for the qualifier, because that's very.
Exactly, because there are limitations as to what the city can do.
But with that, so back to this recommendation, Counselor Stockwell?
I, I do feel that since we haven't used it during this entire time of the pandemic, that it's not that functional as, as part of the charter. And I also have a slight leaning towards having the department of health as our, I just think they have more knowledge, they have more resources. In this particular time, they're far better sourced than a local board. That the local board should at least be connected to the department of health. They should answer to the department of health. If we keep this ordinance as written, I would want it changed so it read that it don't answer to the city manager, they answer to the department of health.
That might be a good compromise if, in the discussion here. And Counselor Hemrick, I'll address you next, and I have a question for you too. Since you said that you have served on one of these, I'm just looking to see if you have received information from department of health regarding things like local orders that they've been able to provide you data as part of that function.
This is a correction, I have not served on a board of health. I've served, well, that's correction, the town health officer is on, does serve on a board of health. And, and I just followed the town health officer manual published by the commissioner of health and then reported back, I think Booton, Counselor Booton's point that this, the way this is structured in our charter provides more power and authority to, to the city. And early in the pandemic, I suggested right away that we should convene a meeting of the board of health. And I know clerk does kind of push back on, on having the board of health meet. But other, other communities did convene their boards of health. For instance, Brattleboro did and put some pandemic safety measures in place that then the, the governor struck down by executive order. I don't think that would have happened under this charter language. There would have been more local control, at least as I read this as a non-lawyer. It appears that way, way to me. So I, you know, I think, I, I still think there's opportunities for, to have a local board of health of specialists, have, show a leadership role in this and other issues that the city council would just not have time to do or do with the depth of knowledge that would be needed in terms of hearing or testimony. So I really support keeping this language in the charter.
Give it to Keith Olber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did, I did look at the current town, town health officer manual provided by the state. And there are two small sections when it comes to the pandemic. But one of the things says is that the town officer will consult with the local regional department of health office. I can tell you that we were in contact with them almost on a, twice a day and getting the updates with them. With the state's emergency order, that's where the emergency management director kicked in, in Chief Brent. We were actually on a daily conference call with the department of health and the HOC. So we were very well connected to, to the department health at that point in time and following the guidance set out by them and the state of Vermont.
So Joe, is there, because that's the emergency management and Chief Brent is the emergency management officer. I believe that's the correct term for it. Director. Is there any interaction with a board of health? Because I don't believe there was in our situation here in Berry.
There, there was not. I would urge the council to keep the language. I do think it is a valuable tool to have. To have to recreate it when there, there may be a need that would come up, I think would be problematic. But I think if it's already there in place, it doesn't say that we cannot convene it or utilize it. Right now, we have a pretty effective health officer and deputy health officer. There are issues that are beyond the city's control and by statute, we're not allowed to exercise coming onto the property or taking actions. But, you know, we only have so much that we can utilize to be able to take action on. I understand Counselor Hemrick, in the health order, it does have some value and my recommendation to the council is to keep the language.
Counselor Booton, is your hand up again?
It is. So one of the things that was mentioned was, you know, how it, how the board would report to the manager. And, and I can understand that could be some concern. However, the manager reports to us. So we could inform the manager that all the stuff goes through the, you know, the Vermont Department of Health and that, that just goes to the point where we maintain that, that control over it. I mean, it's, it's not like it's hurting anything at this moment in time. And I think that, you know, unless there's, you know, some sort of public outcry that we shouldn't have power, I definitely don't see why we need to remove it.
Counselor Stockwell?
This is just a question for Joe. I was wondering about, I know that there are bedbug infestations and for people who are on the board of health. Can, can our local board of health or is there any way we can use city resources to deal with a bedbug infestation, say in apartment buildings that you know of?
So from, from the statute, and I, and I verified this last week, is a, is a single account of a bedbug report is on the owner or the leasee of the apartment. If it becomes two or more adjacent apartments where the infestation is, then it becomes upon the landlord to take responsibility. I know of two instances in the city that they are being actively taken care of. Unfortunately, if you drive them out of one apartment into another, then they just keep on living. So the treatment has to be effective and proper and that they have to do the proper sealing. Unfortunately, we do have a large number of transient folks that likes to couch surf. And unfortunately, that's how a lot of these issues partake is that the bedbugs are, are transferred. Directly, the department of health sees them as a nuisance species, not a epidemic species. So from when I talked to them, bedbugs don't particularly spread disease. And that's from them. And that's the best I could do the research on that. We do work with local landlords when there is an infestation. Both Inspector Strachan and Fire Marshal Harworth do work with them to try to get it cleaned up the best that they can within the guidelines that have been set out by the health department.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Michael? No, all good? So, from what I'm hearing. I guess there's no real consensus at this point, but the one suggestion I would say is if this is to be reviewed further. One thing that Councilor Booton had noted is we can direct the manager to direct the Board of Health to work with the Department of Health. As an alternative to changing the language. I don't know if that's amend amenable. If that is, then that might be not an action for for a charter change, because it sounds like a majority of. People would probably not remove it at this point.
Should we do a vote just to say we had a voter?
Well, I think it would be giving direction to the work group, and I think that at least a straw poll would be helpful. Councilor Booton?
Yeah, I don't think we're allowed to do negative motions. If I recall, Carol talked to me once about it, or twice, or maybe three times. But, yeah, I I think. I mean, you can put me down as not not wanting to remove it, obviously.
Councilor Hemrick?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if now is the the best time for this, but there were some other charter items that I'd recommend that the subcommittee. Consider one is the.
Before you move down it, I mean, we have one. Let's just finish this one up first. So it sounds like you would be in favor of keeping it. Councilor Booton's in favor of keeping it. Councilor Reel's in favor of keeping it. And I can go either way on this one, and I think Councilor Waz is actually the same. So it sounds like this is one that would not be moving forward.
Okay.
And Councilor Hemrick, before you get started, I know Councilor Reel had some others that she had for consideration.
Yeah, I had a couple that were for consideration. Unfortunately, they did not make it in time for the packet. Bill and I, actually, Bill and I were, Bill Inherne and I were on email correspondence today about one, and thankfully he's here. There were two emails. Unfortunately, I didn't have time to read the second one. The first one. And Bill, please tell me if I'm I'm using your words correctly. One was on the description of the city engineer. The way it's written now is the city engineer shall make public, all surveys of streets, public grounds. Of the city and shall perform such other services as. He may be required by the city manager, and I asked Mr. Inherne if that was correct. And if he still agrees with that language. And his response to me was, and again, please correct me if I'm I'm misquoting you. The city engineer shall cause a survey to be completed for streets and public grounds. Of the city and shall perform other such services as he or she, sorry, as they may be be required by the city manager. And that's that was a charter change.
Okay, so you're looking to add some of the items that they would be responsible for into the charter language?
Correct, and using gender neutral pronouns, of course.
Of course. Is there anything else you wanted to add to that, Bill, since you're here?
So, right now, for the past 10 years, there hasn't been a survey that was employed by the city. And so the change in the language directs the the city engineer to cause it to occur. Rather than to self-perform it. And that was the kind of the the essence of the change, is making sure. We are still getting surveys of streets before we accept them. And it just wouldn't necessarily have to come from inside city.
The the question is is less about the duties than about the title. At this stage of the game, I don't believe that there is anybody who carries the title of city engineer, and yet our charter says there needs to be. So that was the the bigger question as to whether we needed to. Either appoint a city engineer or remove that specific reference.
This would be my opportunity to respond to that for a second. So so I believe it's actually important that the city retain its own engineer on staff. And I believe that because although it can contract for engineering services at any time. Real time it lasts, whether it's a day, three days, three weeks, three months. And to have someone on staff who's who's capable of performing engineering assures you. That you have the capacity to react nearly instantaneously. And and that's a really important. I I think there's additional value in having someone with those skills, particularly. As we look at balancing the needs of the different public works departments. And I I had the pleasure of looking through all of the superintenances. So there's a superintendent for water, a superintendent for sewer. A superintendent for streets. And in in earlier times. Things were literally much simpler. We dealt with, you know, primary treatment, just getting the chunks to fall out. We dealt with streets that were 22 feet wide and had no design standards, because a horse and carriage didn't have a turning radius. And now we're at the point where there's a 73-foot long truck, start looking at defining those curvatures. And they really require engineering skills in that. Again, having one on staff means that's available. So I believe having a designated city engineer. For many, is very valuable to the city. And earlier, I had I had recommended that they actually be licensed rather than just rely on the municipal section. Because it creates a higher standard of knowledge. Again, I don't think that means you address the charter that's. An appointment qualification issue for the manager to address, but I do think it's important to have an engineer.
Thank you.
So that's just a question of coming into compliance with our charter. So I leave that up to the council and the manager.
So your recommendation is that we would not need.
Just come into compliance one way or the other, either get rid of it and be, match what we're currently doing, or appoint the position.
And the follow-up is, do we have a number of people to choose from for appointment? Or would we be basically appointing one of two people in the the city for that position? Okay, so any other comment?
That was, Bill and I, sorry, Mr. Inherne and I were in email correspondence, but something else, but I have yet had time to review it. I apologize for that.
That's that's fine, because I actually, it was the superintendent.
Yeah, I wanted to review it because it was one of those 3:30 emails that I didn't have time to look at.
Councilor Booton?
I apologize.
That's fine. Councilor Booton?
Yeah, I, Bill, if you, or Mr. Inherne. I I can barely hear you. When you're back there. I don't know. I don't know if it would be better if you were closer. I'm sorry.
We're having him move up within the room so he's near the speaker slash microphone.
I'll try to be more succinct with my explanation this time. I believe it's valuable for the city to have an engineer because it provides for the prompt delivery of service. A knowledgeable response to some of the more complex issues that the city faces in the streets, water and sewer divisions. And essentially. I I think it should be retained in the charter as a city engineer position.
Thank you.
And so it was noted that there are other positions that are being looked at, superintendent of streets, water, and so forth. So that will most likely be a future conversation.
Absolutely.
And again, the main reason that these items have been identified is that we're, they they currently. Don't follow what we're practicing. And so it's a question of bringing ourselves into compliance with the charter or bringing the charter into. Match up current practice, so.
So, Councilor Hemrick, you had noted you had some other changes or suggestions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that and appreciate the the work of the committee looking at the charter. I know it's a. It can be thorny work when you pull a string and see, see what might unravel. The first one kind of deals with the sale of public land owned by the people in the city of Barry. We had a legal opinion this year that said that the manager had sole authority to sell the interests of property. Not just property itself, so that can be easements or other rights, which could could largely diminish. The value of publicly held real estate with no sign off by the the charter or by the council or the voters. So that was one point of concern that that would be a power of the manager. And it felt like there should be a little bit more check checking balance there so that lands held in the public trust aren't diminished in value. With some conversation with the with at least elected officials. The second item relates to the rainy day. A fund that's under discussion as part of our budget surplus. As noted during at our Saturday meeting, it sounded like a former mayor laws on champion the ability to. Carry over budget surplus and and I was just wondering if it might be wise to have. Some guardrails about how that surplus could be spent. For instance, should that money be really flexible money that could be applied, however, or should it be retained for. A legitimate rainy day or an emergency situation and having some language about what might. Qualify a as an emergency expense or an emergency repair where you could tap into that rainy day fund. The the third item is on budget amendments. Under the current charter, the the manager has broad discretion to spend the total amounts. Authorized by the voters and move considerable sums of money between departments. And 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 in my view, the budget to a great extent is really a a promise to the voters. About how those funds are going to be spent. It may affect in a great way whether or not somebody says yes or no. To to a budget vote. And and although I think any municipality needs the flexibility to amend the budget throughout the year as the. As the situation change and personnel needs change, it does feel like that would be having, you know, for certain budget amendments. It makes sense that there'd be some council sign off for that. And the last item I would recommend to the the committee is that there be a requirement that the city. Prepare a capital budget and program, just like, just like the general fund budget every single year. And and I've shared some language with the committee from, I think, five or six other municipalities in in Vermont that have. Language like that to 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 make that a statutory commitment and obligation that the city will follow through on and maintain every single year. Thank you.
Thank you. So were you able to look at any of those items? Or would you take those as suggestions to come back at a future, like council meeting to bring back?
I think it's going to be hard to get it all done before the time it needs. I think we have to pick some. Because we also were thinking of the local option tax, a revision to that and bring that to the council. So I think, yes, we can work on this. I I think the the time, we don't have tons of time to do this.
Yeah, I I actually have to agree with the Council of Stockwell. It's it's one we have to pick and choose which is more important. I mean, I agree that Councilor Hemrick has some some great ideas, but it's what we have to pick and choose what's more important.
So, I believe the warning for the, we don't actually have to have the language for it, but the warning of charter changes. Is going to be set at our 21st meeting?
We're not meeting on the 28th, is that correct? Okay, so yes, it's the 21st, and what we do at that meeting is we warn the first and second public hearings. So that's, but we don't have to have language at that stage of the game. What we will do is during the month of January. We will have at least a couple of opportunities for the council to review. Draft language, proposed language, and then the language will be locked at the first public hearing. Which is the last Tuesday in January, which is the same date that the warning is approved for town meeting. So, so there will be opportunities to bring forward. Different ideas and then and then council can winnow it down to the the ones that they they want to. Bring forward this year, the ones that'll fit on the ballot. We've got limitations with regards to. How much we can put on the ballot, if we're going to put each one as its own. Agenda item or article on the ballot. There are certainly pros to doing it that way. The voters have an opportunity to actually read it on the ballot and vote for each one if we do. If we put a whole bunch on there as, you know, are all the charter language changes approved? So that it's one lump thing. We have not had a good track record with getting those kinds of changes approved. Because the, I think the voters like to be able to have independent say on on the different sections, so.
Okay, so I guess looking to the work group, you've heard some of the suggestions and. I don't know if you would be ready by that the 21st. It doesn't sound like that would be the case.
21st of December?
Yeah, so if there's a, one of the first two meetings in January, I think it's the 4th or 11th. That may give a little more time if you want to meet and and basically come up with what the clerk said, what you think may fit on the ballot. And it could be any number of those items, including some that Councilor Hemrick has proposed, could include local options and. Just look for a recommendation.
Right, and I'm not opposed to it. You know, I I definitely think we can meet again. We probably will have. You know, I think the later date would be sound better to me. I don't know about you, Councilor Stockwell, but. And definitely if we have time, I would definitely like like to talk to Councilor Hemrick and see which which ones are more important to him to be put up.
Yes, I agree. I think a session with Councilor Hemrick present so we can talk it through and, you know, think about what things are most important to happen next. And will shape city policy in ways that make it more just and more fair.
Okay.
If that's okay with you, Councilor Hemrick.
Yeah, absolutely, and I'd be willing to help draft a markup for an attorney review, too.
Thank you.
Anything else for the charter work group? Hearing and seeing none. The next item is actually pretty quick. Item 8B is really based on those charter changes. So if we are to have any changes that would affect positions within the charter. The administrative ordinance actually plays right off from that. So when we're talking about the city engineer, for example, if that position is still to be kept. Then we would be able to readjust what that position does in our ordinance based on what is in charter. Versus if it's not to be kept, we would then want to eliminate those sections that reference it. So my recommendation, just because it was an item that was on our priority list, is we should put that off for discussion until after. The charter discussion, and if there's anything that remains that would affect that administrative ordinance. That we then have that as a discussion after it goes through the process.
Sounds good.
Makes sense.
Makes it, okay. Okay, noted as such. Moving on to item 8C, Act 164, which is S54 Regulation of Cannabis. And again, Councilor Stockwell and Reel.
Vermont, sure, Vermont, I I can start and you can chime in. Vermont statutes have now enabled retail sales of marijuana, of cannabis. However, it's extremely restrictive. And there will not be a Walmart of cannabis sales, and there will not be a McDonald's of of cannabis sales. The the regulations and statute are 102 pages long, so there's lots of regulations. It will also not be a huge moneymaker for the city because the state is taking a lot of that tax. So it is an opportunity for the city to enable another kind of business to come into the city. It's it's neither going to be a huge moneymaker or or I think a complete drain. I don't think it's going to have enormous impact. That would be my take on looking through the regulations.
And it's an opt-in.
It's an opt-in.
Yeah, so do we have obligation because of the statute to play something on our town meeting day ballot? To say we do want to have the voters weigh in on this?
I think we can choose either way. We can choose to put it on the ballot, but we can also choose not to, I believe.
So we do not, so from my understanding, we do not have to put it on our ballot. However, other towns have already voted on this. Not every town, as you can see. Again, it's an opt-in. It's a way to bring a business into Barry. And again, other towns are already voting yes or no. Not every town has voted yes on this. Through the statistics, you know, it's showing that, you know. You know, marijuana is is coming coming into Vermont. So we are just looking at if this is something we want to put on the ballot as a yes or no and have the voters. Respond to it.
And the other question is more of. And the other question is more of, uh, you could see, I think it was down in either Bennington or Brattleboro, there was an overdose and a lot of issues that were happening because even though they had marijuana, marijuana can be laced with other chemicals or items. So if this was something to enable sales, would it make the product safer for those who are actually using it?
I believe it's going to be highly regulated just from scanning through the hundred and two pages.
Yeah, studies studies have shown that if you have a dispensary, it's highly regulated, it's highly tested. You know, everything's done, whether if you're getting off the street where it can be mixed in with things like fentanyl from a street dealer. So that way we could have, you know, just like anything else off the, and I hate to call it this, but the black market or a street, you know, you'll have things laced.
As was.
Yeah, and ju- just to clarify, uh, and I know this isn't what you were saying, but just to clarify, there is no such thing as an overdose from cannabis. That's not a thing that happens. That's not real. Uh, and I will also add that, yes, there was that case in Brattleboro with uh fentanyl laced cannabis. However, the tests that are, the field tests that are used to determine if something is laced or not are incredibly unreliable and it is not often. What we see in the media as reported as laced cannabis is not always fact, is what I will say. Um, I am in favor of putting this on the ballot. I'm in favor of recreational cannabis. I think it's a racial justice issue. I think it's a social justice issue. I think it's an economic justice issue. Uh, and I support putting it on the ballot and I support it to pass.
So and that's the recommendation from the work group too, that it be placed?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, councillor Booton?
Well, I'm in the minority on this. I will be voting for it if it actually goes through just because I think that if the city wants to vote on it, that's the city's decision. Um, I'm not overly excited about having a dispensary on Main Street. Um, me personally, uh, but, you know, I I don't have a problem with the city voting on it as a municipality. If we decide we want that, then that's what the city wants. If the city doesn't want that, then that's what the city wants. I'm not, I'm, but I do not, I do not like the idea of having dispensaries on Main Street. I I just, you know, I I don't know if our zoning ordinance has anything regarding that. I feel like it does. But um Janet's not, Janet here to speak on that? He does not.
Yeah, she's here. I'm here.
Oh, she is.
Um, yep, the the zoning speaks to um, um, drugs within distances of schools right now. And I can, and I can pull that up on the screen or I can share that with you at another time for sure.
Yeah, I think, I actually think I made some comments about that when it was going through, if I recall. Uh, yeah, I mean, it is what it is, right? I mean, the the council's going to vote on it. We're going to put it on the ballot. Like I said, it'll be a decision that the city as a as a whole makes, which I hope, certain way, but it doesn't matter.
Okay, so it sounds like as part of those uh charter, well, that's a separate article, right? That wouldn't be a charter item. So it really doesn't affect, one doesn't affect the other in this case. Um, the other question though was just related to um our ability to tax. And so the local options tax was something that was mentioned, and would we be able to gain a local options tax on that? Uh, if it did go through, or is that something that we would need to ask legislative permission for in order to have?
I I believe that is there in in the existing regulations.
It's just a small amount, I believe.
But it's like a one percent.
Yeah, I believe you're correct. It's a small amount.
The question is, um, would you, would the city have to adopt a one percent sales tax across the board? Or can you do a one percent sales tax specific to um cannabis? I don't know the answer to that.
I, we can bring two different drafts of an LOT charter change and people can decide.
Okay, that sounds good. Councillor Booton?
Yeah, is it possible, so is it possible in the charter um, presentation that you bring forward that in that one, one question includes the local options tax? So, you know, well, you can't do that.
No, because the local option tax tax is a charter change. The enabling language for retail cannabis is not a charter change.
So we should have a motion to place this on the ballot.
Well, we don't have to now. We can, we will wait until we at least see what the language is for the question.
Yeah, in about a month.
Because there's a couple of different versions of language for the question.
And is that determined by statute what we can put on the ballot or is that up to? I would just say if 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 we have some control over this, I would much prefer the use of the word cannabis than marijuana.
That's how it's referred to in statute, so.
So presumably.
Yeah, so we did the same thing.
Great. Councillor Hemmerich?
Um, maybe, I think so. I have a couple of questions and and just because I haven't put my head into the legislation um closely, but it but it sounds like uh there does need to be a municipal opt-in process. Um, and then for communities that opt in, there are local regulatory mechanisms and it could either be some regulation through the zoning regulations or I if I if I think I've heard this right, that there can be a cannabis control board. Perhaps it could even be assigned to our local board of health, um, and have to be a a separate board um for regulation by ordinance. Um, and just uh if, you know, if this were to all happen and the voters were to approve, uh, I think I'd feel a lot more comfortable um al- allowing this in certain districts, uh, less visible to youth populations um, and more likely to renovate a a vacant or flooded structure in the city.
Just to answer councillor Hemmerich, yes, there is a state cannabis control board, but any municipality may also have a local cannabis control board.
But doesn't have to.
You don't have to, but you may.
Enabling la- language for it.
Yeah, it can be the same way that we do a local liquor control board by the by the council. It could be the same thing that that approval of licenses is issued by the um by the council, or you can have a um a cannabis board that involves, you know, citizens, so.
Uh, councillor Booton and then Janet?
Um, yeah, I I mean, regarding the local options tax, I know that there's going to be some conversation about um, sales tax on other things. If we do do, you know, any type of local option check, option tax regulations, I think that should be separate from the cannabis local options tax on the ballot.
So not to confuse it, I believe.
That would be really prudent.
Yeah, what I believe um it would be is we would be asking for a charter change. Uh, and and I'm doing a supposal here. So the charter change language would basically say that we would be able to do a one percent sales tax and we could then allocate the that funding to go to streets and sidewalks as a s- like example. And then the op- uh, other item is a separate article would list uh the enabling language that would allow us uh for for cannabis. And that's where if the voter said yes, then that would be something that would be here. Uh, and then.
Not what I said.
Okay, so I clarified.
I think that is what you said.
Okay. Well, well, unless you're going to add on there a separate um, article for specifically cannabis local options tax. Because I think, quite frankly, I would say we should be able to go up beyond one percent.
I I don't think we'd be allowed. So the sales tax, I believe, is up to one percent. And and we'd have to research it a little bit more, but I know that only one municipality in the state has two percent. Uh, we have one percent, which is, I think, similar to about twenty eight or twenty nine other municipalities for uh, our rooms, meals, and alcohol, and those other municipalities also, uh, majority of them have the sales tax too. But we can research that for when it does come back. Janet?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that um uh, the zoning speaks to um medical marijuana as an outpatient or a clinic. Uh, right now it would be treated as retail sales. Uh, but councillor Hemmerich is correct. There's begun to be quite a bit of um email traffic on our Vermont Planners Association regarding this and um I just, I think there's going to be a lot that's going to come out and there's more information pending that we should all keep our ears open for. And I'm happy to share what I learned and um I I know councillor Hemmerich sees it as well.
Okay, thank you. So any other questions or comments for the Act one city uh sixty four regulation of cannabis?
For the record, they really butchered this law. You don't have to write that. You can.
So noted. Okay, seeing, seeing and hearing none, uh, we can move on to item eight D. Uh, this is the update on volunteer information. Councillor Reel had placed an item in the packet. Uh, councillor Reel?
I'm surprised people aren't sick of hearing me talk tonight. Um, so what I did was um, over, over the time as I researched um, volunteer organizations from the city of Berry. However, um, like all resource lists, um, after the fact, um, you find out there's one you miss. Um, there's probably a change in an address, there's change in the telephone number. Um, but I went through and I found seven pages of different nonprofit organizations or city government that people um or um faith communities um that you can volunteer for in the city of Berry. Um, I have put together a salt, like I said, a seven page list um with their email address, their um address, if they provided their telephone number um of places that are looking for volunteers. However, um, when I was researching this list, it was um pre, during, and uh post pandemic. Well, we're still in the pandemic. I apologize. Um, so I do not know how their volunteers changed um, um, et cetera, et cetera. So and then even tonight, uh, Carol informed me that I I missed the Opera House. And also, uh, when I was making this list, the uh People's Health and Wellness um moved locations. Um, so this is probably the, as up to date as I know it. Um, but um, so I, the, so I'm not sure how people want this presented or or who's going to, after this leaves my my um computer, who is going to keep it updated. Um.
So just to speak to you a little bit more, uh, in a previous council was brought up that on our page, we have volunteer opportunities for city council uh, boards, body, you know, bodies of the city. And there are so many other opportunities that are out there, uh, and such a big need on on volunteers to help out. So this list, uh, I think to your to your question of who would maintain it, uh, Steve would probably say, uh, that would be something that Jody could do. Um, I don't want to speak for him, but I I think that would be the the direction that he would move in. And since we have this list, we have a volunteer opportunity section on the website. Uh, on that uh application page, there could be other opportunities where this list could live. And then that could be a list that is updated for uh ongoing. So if there are other volunteer groups that come in, people that leave, it, we know that it won't be a hundred percent, but it's going to at least uh provide that avenue for people to be more involved. Uh, doing the the work, and I I probably should note too, that on December thirteenth, we're having our volunteer recognition for the city. I think I mentioned that at council before, but um we have seen a large increase in the number of people that are involved in the city of Berry and not just with our uh bodies of the city, but we now have three different community work groups that are are working on a number of things. So it's it's been pretty impactful, I think, uh, and we have a lot of the residents getting involved. So um, I think with the list that Erica has prepared, uh, if we review it, if there's any corrections that need to be made, we can provide that and then the list can be turned over to Steve and he can best direct how to have that managed.
And I'm definitely in favor of volunteerism. I I do a lot of it myself. Um, my concern, my my big concern with resource lists is they don't get updated enough and information gets old. Um, but no, I'm more than happy, again, these are only, there are so many more nonprofits within Washington County, within the the Berlin monthly area, but these are only within variousity limits. Um, so that's where I I contain all of my um research.
I think that's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so councillor, if there's no objection, uh, we can review the list, make sure to update where needed uh, and then have Erica provide the list to Steve and then um just, I guess the direction would be place it on the website and make sure that people are aware that it's out there.
Thank you, councillor Reel.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, no other questions or comments? Okay, so now we're under new business. No, that's great because those were the items that we were not able to get to last week. So I thank everyone for for getting through those. Um, nine A is the seat adjustment to the development review board. Uh, and it lists Denise Ferrari and it has my name, but I'm going to actually defer to uh Janet Shatney to give an overview of what uh seat adjustment really means.
Thank you. Uh, welcome Pete, welcome Denise. Um, all the seat adjustment is about is um to explain better, the development review board consists of nine members. Two seats for each ward and three at-large members, which means those three can be from any ward within the city. Currently, our at-large members consist of two of the three from Ward two. So it was suggested uh to ask one of the Ward two members to take a Ward two seat to open up an at-large opening for Mr. Fornier, who happens to live in Ward one. So it's an administrative move that we have done administratively and at DRB uh meetings, a post-hearing um frequently. Uh, but given the new policy, uh, we felt it was appropriate to bring it in front of council just to explain what it means and to understand that Denise, the only difference will be is that Denise will now have a different uh term ending than she did as an at-large seat.
And Janet, just to clarify that, uh, term ending is actually sooner rather than later. So it makes it more of a uh, the process, if Denise wants to run again, she would have or be appointed again, she would be up for a reappointment sooner.
That is correct.
Councillor Booton, I see your hand is up?
Yeah, I think that's fine. And should we take them both at the same time as um Mr. Fornier is up on the next agenda and we just make the the motion to accept and make the change? Or do you want a motion to make the change?
Um, so I would take them separately because for our appointments, we do go through the process of uh interviewing, for lack of a better term. Uh, and I want to make sure that that we actually agree with the uh the process first too, so.
Uh, that's fine. I make a motion.
So you make a a motion to make the seat adjustment for Denise Ferrari?
Second.
Moved in second, okay. Discussion, and I see councillor Hemmerich's hand is up?
Yeah, I would, I would move that we uh table this. I know the DRB hasn't met since August and uh and the point of the new policy was to uh advertise positions widely, give uh members an equal opportunity to uh apply and be considered by council and to have a a a really routine process and and that policy is now in effect and um, and so it feels like this memo is um this this approach isn't consistent with the policy that the council um just adopted. And if there's no hurry, I I think we should follow through on the 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 policy and the procedures we just set up uh for the appointments and positions to uh the development review board. And so I would, I would recommend that we we table this um uh to allow that that policy to be implemented. Um, with with all due respect to the applicants, but I but I think we, the point of that policy was to be just very fair and transparent about how appointments take place in the uh the the city, but and that there aren't quick shuffles.
Any other comments? Okay. So I didn't hear a second for the tabling. Um, so I'll move forward with the motion. All those in favor of making the seat adjustment to the development reviewer, review for, development review board, please signify by saying aye.
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 And all those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, okay, so now there is a seat adjustment that has been made. Uh, Denise Ferrari will be in that uh Ward two seat, which means that there is an opening. Um, so. So under item nine B, to speak to the application, Janet, can you provide a little more information on the application when it was received? And and then we can follow up with Pete from there.
Thank you, Denise.
Sure. So Pete, initially, I have to look back, he sent a letter and initially back in September and then a follow-up letter um the end of September, early October, I think that's the the uh one of the letters that I've included in the packet. This has actually been on um council agenda a couple times and has been moved a couple times uh as the mayor and the manager look at the agendas, so that's only why you're seeing it now. I respect the policy, um just wanted everybody to know that uh this is um, this has been uh pushed several times, so. And with that, I will let Pete uh introduce himself. He's a longtime volunteer in the city. Take it away.
So Pete, coming up to the microphone, tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in the position.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening and good evening, city council members. As Janet mentioned, uh I am a resident of Ward One, but I was on the in addition to other jobs, it's like I was in your position for six years. I've been a resident of Berry City for fifty years. Uh I was on the fire department full-time at one time and I've performed other positions with the city of Berry, but I guess my love has been kinda with the Development Review Board. I was on the DRB for uh give or take roughly fifteen years. I originally um dropped from the Development Review Board because my wife and I were undergoing some major projects at our property here in Berry City. I think Carol's aware, aware of it. But um we had five or six major projects that we were gonna uh work on accomplishing over several years and believe it or not, uh we're coming to an end here. So when the uh DRBC opened up earlier this summer, I expressed interest again with the city manager about going back uh to the DRB. Uh unfortunately, uh the first time the seat was considered, I wasn't able to make it, but uh I did follow up, uh as Janet Shatney said, with the second letter expressing continued interest. And um so here I am with that continued interest, and if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to try the answer to them.
Sure, so you know, the typical questions I have are, you know, when they meet and how often, and you're able to meet the commitment to attend those meetings?
Yes.
I don't have a question so much as a comment. First, thank you for being willing to, even after fifteen years, come back and serve again. And I can't speak for the rest of council, but if anyone uses the phrase, "They love the DRB", I feel almost obligated, so I will make the motion to appoint Mr. Fornier to the DRB.
I'll second.
Moved in seconded. Uh Council Booton, I see your hand is up?
Kinda disappointed and annoyed that uh Counselor Wazak beat me to that punch. Pete, it's great to have you back.
Thank you.
And it's great to see the new siding and the roof and the garage.
Yes, I had some major projects my wife and I were accomplishing.
Uh Janet, your hand is up as well?
I just, I just wanted to be sure that um in order to follow the 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 new policy well, and the DRB, having just explained to you, we have ward seats and at-large, is it worth it to amend the motion to appoint Mr. Fornier to an at-large position, so there's no confusion going forward?
I'm by the mover.
Yep, thank you for making that note. So that has been the adjustment to the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, well, I'm, you need to ask too, do we need an executive session for this at all? Just because that's within our policy? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, thank you very much and welcome back, Pete.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item nine C. This is the review and or revising of the electric vehicle charging fees, the city clerk. And uh Pete, you don't have to stick around for the rest of the meeting if you don't want to.
No hesitation.
Six years of experience on a council speech.
Good night.
So um I am looking at the wrong presentation. All right, um I I put together a a memo, but it really is meant to sort of start the conversation. It's not uh it it's not a a finalization. Um the the city of Barry has two electric vehicle charging stations. The one in Pearl Street is not currently operational, uh the one out on Merchant's Row is. Uh and we have over the 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 parking team has over the past two years or so, and council's been involved also, uh been having discussions about the operations of the EV charging stations and what's the best way to uh to use them, what's the best way to charge? Uh what's the best way to try to recapture the expenses associated with it? We have uh expenses associated with the ChargePoint contract, which is uh the the um the app that we uh have a contract with that provides wayfinding and uh a way for users to pay. We also, of course, pay the electricity on the on the uh um the charging stations. Uh at one point in time, we were uh exploring the idea of making uh the charging stations free, making charging free, but putting up park mobile parking so that you would have to pay parking to park at the spaces. Uh as I put in my memo, um we we actually uh had a side conversation with Desmond, which is the parking consultants we're using for the Tiff District. And we talked a bit about charging stations. The the consultant said that uh what they have seen in their experiences over the last uh year or so is uh an exponential growth in the number of charging stations around the country and they consider that uh the future, um that we will continue to see that kind of growth. And their recommendation was to not give away charging. Um and so we, the parking team has been relooking at what the options might be. And so one of the things that that we came up with that we're bringing forward is the idea of changing our current fee structure. At the moment, our fee structure was built on our parking meter rates. Um and so what the the fees that are being charged at the moment for charging, charged for charging is a dollar fifty for the first hour and seventy-five cents for each additional hour, which is practically free. Um and essentially what that's doing is it's uh because eight hours at the meter is almost exactly the same cost as eight hours of charging. Um so we're we're essentially giving the charging away for free and only collecting for the parking. Um and so the thought was to uh create an escalator with regards to the charging fee, so that it starts at a lower amount for maybe the first hour or first two hours, and then the next two hours goes up and the hours after that go up. Um trying to find a way to incentivize people to move their vehicles after they are fully charged to make the space available to the next person who might want to use it. So that's, that's what I I have put in here for essentially background information. Um I'm not recommending at this stage of the game that, yes, this is what we do. Uh what I'm recommending is that uh that we continue, i- if council is interested, we continue to explore this idea um with an eye towards uh making some kind of an adjustment in the near future, so that we can start uh, so that we have a program set up where we're we're helping to capture the the actual costs associated with the value of parking and the value of charging. And we're incentivizing turnover at the at the charging station. So I will stop talking fast.
So um it sounds like uh a good layout, but we, a finalization will come at a later day. The the one question I have, and probably something I should have known beforehand is so for the the rate, cuz it was an hour, a dollar fifty and then seventy-five cents afterward, does that even pay for our electricity?
Oh gosh, no. No, we we um we don't pay for the electricity, and once you figure in the ChargePoint contract also, we're currently losing five to six hundred dollars a year.
And that's in the memo there?
Yes.
So council? Oh, uh Council Booton?
Gee, I wonder what I'm gonna say about this. Maybe the last thing that I've said for the last
I can say it for you if you want.
Five years? It's it is extremely frustrating to me that we subsidize rich people with their electric cars. And uh you know, and uh my my thought personally would be, you know, the park, I know the the park mobile put a large amount on it so that it covers the actual costs. And if you're caught there without paying for the parking, two hundred dollar fine. Anybody that has an electric car, they can afford it. I'm sorry, I and I say that as someone that shopped for an electric car when I was looking at Jeeps. Uh you know, and it's, and electric cars are like ten, fifteen thousand dollars more than a regular gas guzzler. And the only people that can afford those cars are the people that are making lot, plenty of money that don't need to be subsidized by the city.
So
I'm sorry, I I it really bugs me.
No, understood, and I know, cuz we've talked about it for years. So on a related note, uh we have a number of gas stations, but I don't believe any of them actually have charging stations at them. Uh in Montpelier, there are charging stations. So is there a way to approach any of the private uh institutions and see if they have plans to be installing anything in the near future?
To what end?
So basically, if if Counselor Booton says we shouldn't even do this anymore, it means that we would have less charging stations within the city. And so I just don't know if there's anything, uh as the the parking consultants have noted, that there's a trend in growing number of of uh charging stations and just electric cars in general across the country. So I I don't know if there has been any outreach to the gas stations, and it could be the consultant that would be doing this to see if they're actually starting to make that move, to start transitioning some of their pumping stations into charging stations or not.
A couple things, um the 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 consultant is not working on this. We we steered the conversation away and then we stopped and and came back, because they're under contract to work on Tiff, they're not under contract to work on EV stations. Um the other thing I just wanted to say, we're not the only charging station in the city. There are, I believe, three private ones in addition to ours, at least two. And then uh third, uh it it is a trend that municipalities do offer charging stations, um many of them offer them for free, which I don't espouse, but um but no, we have not had a conversation with local uh um local gas stations about whether they're they're looking to do it. Um I I find it difficult to think that the gas stations would would move in that direction, because a car has to park for at least, you know, a a minimum period of time to get a charge, even if it's a um a fast charging station. So it's uh, you know, having them in parking lots uh seems more um more practical and more effective.
Um so I'll do Counselor Wazak, and then I'll go back to Zoom for Janet, Rich, and then Michael.
Yeah, I would just add um just one thing that I thought is there are um they're very large gas, and not to contradict the clerk, but I I up and down the ninety-three interstate in New Hampshire, a lot of those gas stations now have electric vehicle. I drive to see my dad all the time and I just have seen them, and those are very loud, but that was just something that popped into my mind. And another thing, just for context, is there's huge investment in the um infrastructure bill recently passed and signed in uh expanding electric charging stations across the country, and I think their goal is to have one every fifty miles or something like that, but there is a large expansion of federal money available for charging stations. I don't know whether, and I'm not advocating for the city to do that or a private developer to do that, but that money is there. Uh so we should expect to see some expansion, whether it's private or public.
Janet?
Thank you, Mayor. Um if if, just so so people know, if they don't already, there is on the Drive Electric Vermont uh site, there is a uh map that shows all the EV charging stations in Vermont, and you can zoom in to see the ones that are in Berry City. And as Carol uh said, there's three active at the moment. And ironically, I've received an electrical application from Capstone, who is intending to install an EV station over in their parking lot. And there are huge incentives for multifamily buildings right now to install EV charging stations uh through grants and um, but you've gotta have the parking room to convert a space or two to uh an EV slot. But the ability is absolutely out there.
Thank you. Rich Murray?
Yeah, I was gonna point out Janet and Carol both kinda touched on it, but um the building where my office is located in downtown actually has a charging station at it. And that may be owned by former Mayor Lozon, who's on the call. I'm I'm not a hundred percent sure of that. Um and Mayor, you pointed out about gas stations, Maplewood up on the hill has a huge separate lot from their parking lot that has charging stations, although those may be Tesla-specific, I'm not a hundred percent sure. And the other thing worth noting is that Efficiency Vermont actually has rebates right now for home charging stations for electric vehicles. Um and that's in conjunction with the the electric companies such as Green Mountain Power, Washington Electric, and who else? So there are some incentives out there for uh private homeowners to have uh at-home capabilities for charging as well.
Yeah, up in the the Maplewood area, I believe, because the hotel is right there next to it, it gives an option for them to park their car and stay the night, so it's charging overnight. It it's a little bit different, cuz I I, well, maybe not. I mean, if uh the gas station down here, the Shell Station, and people stay at the pier, but uh it might be a little bit different of a demographics, and I just don't wanna make that assumption, so. Council Booton?
Yeah, uh first of all, I need to apologize that the the rant that I had, nothing to do to toward you, Carol. I mean, you've you've never, you haven't made the the recommendation, and I just, I just wanna be clear, it had nothing, it's it's all about the frustration that I have for a council over and over and over again doing, doing what we've been doing. And uh I just, so I I just wanna apologize. You did an amazing job putting this all together. You do it every single year. And you, thank you, and and I'm really sorry if it came across that way.
It didn't, I'm fine, thank you though.
Council Hermarck?
Yeah, and I was just gonna add that it sounds like um the proposal from Carol would actually get a key concern that Counselor Booton has is that um is that there should be um the charging, people who are benefiting from charging should pay their fair share for the the space. And so it sounds like a really good, good proposal, and I know that there are a lot of incentives right now to to make EVs more affordable from state. Utility incentives like Green Mountain Power, federal incentives, that really are, have brought down um not only the cost of purchase an electric vehicle, but um but there's also the the savings you get from operating an electric vehicle. And if you go to Drive Electric Vermont, you can see the cost of ownership and put in, you know, how many miles per gallon you're getting right now and 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 see how much you might, and how many miles you drive a year and see how much you might save. Some could be, could be uh as much as five thousand dollars over five years that you could save driving an electric vehicle, and that's from a person who does not drive an electric vehicle. But but uh but it does seem like there's some really compelling affordability measures that's that are making these cars more and more affordable uh for everybody, not just the the early adopters who um have the disposable income to be at the Um, not just the, the early adopters who, um, who have the disposable income to be at the front end, so things are changing, and, uh, and I think they're gonna continue, continue to change, and, and I hope EV drivers choose, uh, to stop and bury and spend their money here, uh, first, um, because we have that amenity.
Counselor Booton?
So with the changes to the price, I mean, are we still gonna, or will we at least break even?
Uh, well, all I put in here was examples, we haven't, you know, council hasn't said that this is what we're going to do, looking, and I haven't gone into, you know, we get a fair amount of data from, uh, from the ChargePoint website, um, every single usage. The, the, the one thing that I find a little annoying is it tells me the exact time down to the second when somebody plugs in and the exact time when they stop being plugged in, but they don't tell me how much time that is. I have to calculate it to then figure out how much that would, that would generate for us, uh, with a different fee schedule. And that's a big, and there's no formula I can develop in Excel to do a time subtract from one to another. I've tried a million different ways. Um, if I could, uh, if I could glean that information, I could give you a, a, a firmer answer. It certainly would, um, put us closer to break even. We have improved over the, the six years that we have had the stations. We've come a long way, actually.
And, and I understand that, it just, it's, you know, it's just something that sticks in my, my craw. It can, since Mr. Lozon is on the line, um, could, could you advise, if you're willing to provide that information, how much you charge at your station?
Tom, go ahead.
Uh, well, thank you, Mayor. The, the initial, first of all, we approached it, uh, simply because we felt it was the right thing to do, uh, provide that amenity. We have the only level four, and Carol, I was surprised when you said there were three uh, in the city privately owned, because we own three, and I'm a li- little disappointed that others haven't joined in. But, uh, you know, w- we did it because we thought it was the right thing to do. From a, from a return on investment point of view, um, I, I guess, um, it's not a moneymaker. I mean, you don't, you know, we did it, like I said, because we thought it was the right thing to do. We installed one level four, uh, just off of Granite Street, another level two just off of Granite Street, and then the one referred to by former Counselor Maury at three twenty-two North Main Street, but, um, you know, making the numbers work, you know, in terms of return on investment, it doesn't, it doesn't quite get there, but you know, a lot of things, whether it's Christmas for kids or, or the meals, you know, a lot of things don't make, um, you know, sense financially. So I, I'm a little on the spot here, so from a financial point of view, it doesn't make sense. Okay, if you look at it as return on investment, I don't look at it that way. I do it for my grandkids and, and, and somebody's got to go first, so, you know, here we are, and that's the best I can do, sorry.
Yeah.
That's, that's fine, I apologize for asking that question. Um, I'm sorry about that. Hey. So
I still love you, Michael.
What? Love you too. Um, so, I, I mean, I, I still think we should move down the Park Mobile way um, and modify our, our ticket price for, for people parking there illegally, and that includes day and night. And, um, this way, if we catch somebody there parked illegally, a big fine. You know, one that's equitable, for two hundred bucks. You know, which would cover the parking, you know, charging for that one day at least.
Counselor Waz's Zach?
So just to clear, um, well, first of all, I agree with Mr. Lous on that it's definitely not a moneymaker, but it definitely is the right thing to provide. Um, but I also just want to provide the context that it's not as if the city is purging thousands of dollars a year. This is a less than a one thousand dollar hole, right?
Loss.
Yeah, right, right, so this isn't like, this ain't bankrupting the city. Um, but, so, Michael, just to be clear, is your proposal to do the charging for free and just turn it into a regular paid parking spot with those heavier fines?
Heavier fines and heavier parking fees. So try to figure out, because I'm assuming we can figure out how much it's gonna cost to, you know, get the power for per hour or per fifteen minutes and, and do it that way.
I'm
And, and then it's, it's a situation where we have to rely on our, our police department and, and D, uh, to, to write the tickets, the larger amount tickets. And we would have to have that ticket in place before we remove the ChargePoint. I mean, I, I, the, the chances of us losing the amount that we've been losing for the last five, six years that we've been doing this, I, I don't, I'd rather take a gamble on that than, than guarantee the loss.
Yeah, so Michael, what I think I'm hearing is between the two items, the parking fee, uh, if there is somebody parked illegally there, that, that's not a part of the equation for breaking even. But we need to set rates based on our data, and I'll try to see if I can help out with a something with Excel. Yeah, um, but basically making it that we can recoup that six hundred dollars so we at least break even with those spots.
Sounds good.
Yeah, and what we can do with Park Mobile, i- i- if you, if you use Park Mobile, you know that what happens is you go up and the sticker tells you what zone you're in. We would establish a zone that was specific for the parking spaces where the EV charging stations are, and we would have specific rates, parking rates, just for those, uh, back here, those two spaces. So, um, and then, of course, we would have, we already have signage there, we would probably have to, um, revise the signage so that it essentially says, if you're not parking here, um, and charging, then you need, and having the, the, and not paying the Park Mobile, then, you know, this is what the, the fine is, so.
Yeah, make it a purple color instead of green, yellow.
Something.
Yeah.
So I, I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. Um, so it would be free charging, but more expensive parking, and there would be a, um, the, the parking ticket.
Right.
If they, okay.
And we would no longer have our ChargePoint contract. If we're not charging for the electricity, we would no longer need the ChargePoint contract.
And I'm so sorry, when you say charge, you mean money, not the charging of the vehicle. So they would still have, so they would still have the ability to charge their vehicle.
Yes, but, but we would no longer have the interface with ChargePoint that where, which provides the wayfinding and provides a way for, uh, for people to pay for charging their vehicle.
Okay, yes, I like this idea that we just laid out, I like.
Is Yeah, reduces costs, and then the overall fee per
Yeah.
increment of time would probably be lower because of that, but.
Okay, I, just, just so we, we wrap ourselves back to where we started, this is not what the parking consultant said is the best way to move forward, but.
They said to charge more.
Just
Your suggestion is charge more.
Yes. To make up the difference by charging more, so. But if this is the way that council is interested in moving forward, then what I will do is I will put together some numbers and bring back a proposal for a, a rate change increase, and we will get this done before the end of January when our ChargePoint contract runs out, so.
Perfecto. Any other questions, comments from counsel? Hearing none. Uh, moving on to item nine D, this is the discussion and/or approval of the public record inspection, copying, and transmission policy.
Oh, that's me too, isn't it?
Yeah, that's the other paper.
And, uh, and this one actually, I, I probably should have just put this under consent agenda. Um, you all got my cover memo, you all got my proposed, uh, revisions. Um, essentially, the revisions are, are meant to bring us into complete compliance with statute uh, around, uh, access to public records. Um, so if anybody has any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer them. Um, but otherwise, I present it for your review and approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Counselor Hemrick?
Yeah, so I was just, just out of curiosity, I was wondering if, uh, there are public records for private chats between individuals, say, on, on, on Zoom calls, that would be a retrievable public record?
I, I, that I don't know. I would imagine that they are, if it's during a public meeting like, like this one, I would imagine that they are.
Okay.
I believe our Zoom chats for, like, council meeting, that is a separate file that's, uh, exported, so that, that is public record. Um, and that should be maintained along with the video.
Thank you.
Yeah, also, no, uh, counsel, if you send emails during session, say you're on your laptop right now, um, those could be considered public record as well, so just be aware of that. Okay, so there's motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to item nine E, this is the resolution for Donna McNally's fortieth, uh, forty years of service to the city of Berry. Uh, we didn't know if she would be in attendance or not, it's at the end, though, because, uh, um, we were not able to read it before, so we could have put it under old business, but, um, I think we would want to have this read, and Carol, you have a better voice than I do, so.
I'm happy to read it. Uh, Berry City Resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixteen, a resolution honoring Donna McNally. Whereas Donna McNally began her employment with the city of Berry, Vermont on March twenty nineteen eighty-one, and whereas during her forty-plus years of public service, Donna McNally held the payroll clerk position at City Hall, where she remained until retiring on July thirty twenty twenty-one. And whereas during her years of dedicated service to the citizens and staff of the city of Berry, Vermont, Donna McNally was charged with all aspects of payroll administration for hundreds of city employees over her career, while maintaining a spotless record of playing golf every Tuesday, rain or shine during the season. And whereas throughout her years of service, Donna was the key source for institutional knowledge on past contracts, staffing, and benefit questions, all under the watchful gaze of her many Mickey Mouses. We figured it's Mickey Mouses and not Mickey Mice. And whereas throughout her career with the city, Donna maintained employment taxes and retirement contributions and provided snacks and cuddles to any dog that wandered into the building. And whereas Donna McNally's competence, professionalism, and accuracy were cited consistently by independent auditors engaged by the city of Berry to audit our books and records. And whereas the mayor and city council wish to recognize the selfless example, professionalism, and work ethic of Donna McNally and thank her for her years of service. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and council of the city of Berry, Vermont, on behalf of the administration and our citizens, extend our most sincere gratitude and respect to Donna McNally for her years of service to the city. Be it further resolved that the citizens of the city of Berry, Vermont, wish Donna McNally many years of healthy, happy, and well-deserved retirement by order of the city council of the city of Berry, Vermont, on December seventh twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Carol. And I wish Donna was here to hear that, but we can always, um, you send her the video and say.
And I will, I, we, we try not to read comments from the chat, but I will add, uh, Tom Lous on ads, for the record, Donna rocks. Thank you, Donna. Uh, and Byrne says, thank you, that's a beautiful tribute to Donna.
So it is Resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixteen, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? I do see Michael.
He's clapping.
Always clapping. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? Thank you very much. So we are at roundtable, I'll start first on the Zoom. Uh, Counselor Hemrick, do you have anything for roundtable?
Yeah, I, I did have a quick note, we had a, a good meeting this week, uh, uh, Counselor Reel and I with, um, uh, stakeholders, um, include, uh, including, um, the hospital, healthcare providers, about people getting stranded up, uh, at the hospital and, and after hours, and then not being able to get a transit ride um, back home, they're really, uh, in badly in need of volunteer drivers. Um, they'll reimburse up to fifty si- six cents for every mile as non-taxable income to any volunteer driver, so, um, makes a big difference for, for people in need throughout, throughout their, the region. And I had one other item up, I'm, I'm forgetting my other item, but, um, great conversation, we're gonna keep that going and see if we can't, uh, get to a solution there. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Booton?
All right, so I just want to thank everybody that came out for the, the coin drop on Saturday, and um, I, Monday morning, or no, Monday afternoon, went down to Community National Bank and, um, brought the money in, and I want to give special thanks to Kathy Morse, Laura, Laura Lee Drone, and Brooke La, La Pryce, who helped count all that money, got their hands all nasty smelling, because money stinks. Um, and, uh, what was really interesting is that the time that I was down there, Mayor Luke, uh, Lucas Herring, uh, actually showed up just randomly. Um, so he also helped, and we sorted the coins, uh, they counted the money. And, uh, I'm gonna just go quick around the room, except for Teddy, he cannot answer, and nor can Carol or Lucas, or Mayor, sorry. Counselor Waz Zach and, and, uh, Mayor Herring can't answer, nor can clerk dogs. Uh, so anybody want to take a guess on how much we got?
Seven thousand five hundred and twenty-four.
Wow.
And fifty cents.
Without going over.
Byrne says thirty-seven hundred.
Okay, go ahead, Michael.
Thirty-seven hundred. All right, so the drumroll, sadly, uh, counselors, Stockwell, we did not get that much, however, as a side note, there's still checks coming in. So once those checks come in, we may hit that amount. Uh, but we did, which is, our average has been thirty-six hundred per year. This year, Berry City and the surrounding commi- communities, uh, through the coin drop gave three thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars and fifty-one cents. That money is used to buy gifts for children, and there is no staff cost for that, it is solely for the gifts that our police officers are able to give that, that positive impression to them and deliver those gifts, and, and I'm just really excited about that, and I think it's great. Um, and we'll be wrapping on Saturday.
And, and we do have, um, uh, pledges for another four thousand dollars, so. On top of that.
Yeah. So we'll hit that seventy, seventy-nine hundred. You know what you said?
Oh.
So we'll, we'll hit that amount. So that's really awesome. Um, and like I said, wrapping, I believe it's three o'clock Saturday.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Reel? Counselor Waz Zach?
Yep, just a couple, um, quick acknowledgements that, uh, recently, Mr. Stephen Sondheim passed away. I am nothing if not a theater geek. Um, and Mr. Sondheim's contributions to the art of theater and musical theater are unparalleled, really, in the past eighty to a hundred years. Um, so if you are someone who likes music or the arts, and you have never had the chance to listen to Company or Into the Woods, or Sundays in the Park with George, I would strongly recommend giving those a listen. There are some really good lessons in some of those musicals. Uh, and the other acknowledgement is that today is December seventh, twenty twenty-one, the eightieth anniversary of the attacks on Pearl Harbor and the beginning of US involvement in World War Two. Uh, and so just remembering that it has been eighty years, which is crazy. Uh, since one of, since the last really attack militarily on the United States in that way. And so just remembering December seventh, nineteen forty-one.
Thank you. Counselor Stockwell?
My wife and I were driving.
My wife and I were driving around Berry City and I just have to say Nelson, Nelson Street, Abbott Avenue, they look great. Very impressive, very nice.
Holiday lighting?
Holiday lighting.
Yeah, it's great this time of year. Um, if people can, you know, uh, maybe before dinner or after, put the kids in the car if you have kids or just go out as a, a, a group, um, take your friends and really do. You can just check out the lights throughout the city. It, it is great. And it just adds throughout, uh, the time period between now and, and Christmas. So.
And the gazebo also looks great.
Yeah. No, and I, thank you for those that were able. I don't think we did that. Thanks. Yeah. For everyone who was able to come down for the tree lighting ceremony, it was a, uh, great time to come, uh, down and see that being done.
Great turnout, yeah.
Yeah. Um, I believe Counselor Wazek, uh, Counselor Shombell and Counselor Hemrick are all handing out candy canes during that time period too. Okay, uh, so for roundtable for me, um, yes, I was, I'm a, a finance officer for another nonprofit. So I was randomly down there for a collection of the, the funds. Um, it was great. I actually also learned, um, from a bank teller that if you have that kind of smell on your hands and you have a stainless sink, if you actually rub your hands on the sink itself, it'll help take the smell off from your hands. So they must, uh, do it often enough where that becomes a thing. For December seventh, for Pearl Harbor Day, I did write a proclamation. It is on the city website. Um, it was decided by a previous council that proclamations are not read at council. So I haven't been doing those, but uh, for Small Business Saturday or other things like that, you can find it on the city's website. Um, and it's also special for me because it's my parents' anniversary. So happy anniversary to, uh, Stephen and Marjorie, to my parents. Um, and with that, I am going to pass. I did see Counselor Hemrick's hand go up though.
Oh, I just sort of thought of my second thing, and that was the congratulations to Manager McKenzie on getting the, uh, grant for the stormwater design project up at the odd. It's, uh, I think it's a, it's a big accomplishment. And, and it's gonna help us meet our permitting requirements for the three acre stormwater permit. So that was just great news in the manager's update. And I think worth, worth celebrating and acknowledging, um, outside the packet.
Yeah, and I think that will come on a future agenda because we'll still have to accept that grant. So, um, we'll have that opportunity. Okay, and, um, I believe we addressed, uh, what we could for personnel, uh, so we don't need an executive session. Um, but we will look to have an executive session once the manager is here with us for a future council meeting. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, thank you, everyone.
Good night, Michael. Good night, Jake.
Good night, Michael. And good night, Jake.
Good night, Dave Delcor. Good night, Byrne. Good night, Tom. Good night, Josh. Good night, Joe. Good night, John Boy.